Open our selectmen's meeting. Um, today on the agenda is a visitation from RCAP about rate discussions. And discussing the sewer and then adjournment. So if you guys are all set, maybe we can get started with Lori Stevens from RCAP. And just have her give us a overview of what she kinda did over the last week for us with the additional information with rate, uh, I should say possible rate, um, information. Lori, you all set?
Yes, I am. I'm gonna share my screen. Oh, you have to enable participation for me to do that, please? News to me, there we go.
I don't really know where to do that.
I think last time you had to make me.
Yeah, I had to make you host. I was trying to just allow you to share your screen without doing that. Uh, just so I can let people in as they come in. But I will make you host.
Sure. Let me know if there's something you want me to do to allow people come in or however, I'll be happy to do that. Let me know when you're ready.
You're all set.
You are the host now, okay. Okay, I have on my screen, uh, we talked about rates for the sewer enterprise fund. And we have, um, three different options. And I went over this during the week with Nicole. And, uh, first, can everyone see that? Big enough? Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so we have, um, rates for the sewer enterprise fund. This column is rates based on a four-bedroom maximum. So this is a uniform rate method. The u- unit is per bedroom and units were counted per bedroom with the four-bedroom maximum. The next one, uh, I'll go through these in detail, but the next one is the same similar system, but it was weighted on a three-bedroom maximum. And the last column is rates based on EDUs, your current EDU system. So ex- existing residential EDUs were used and commercial and industrial EDUs were recalculated based on site visits and Title V calculations. And we went over that before. I can give you more detail if you would like later. The metered flow was converted based on the allocation of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twelve gallons per year. So here on this four-bedroom, the first column comes out if you calculate the units. Sorry about that. If you calculate the units, there's, um, one thousand two hundred and seventy-four residential units. Quabin is forty-nine, industrial and commercial have eighty-four. Eagle Hill School is ninety-seven, municipal is twenty-five, and churches were allocated nine units. This comes out to a cost with one bedroom of about five hundred and fifty. A two-bedroom, it's about a thousand, three-bedroom, four-bedroom, so on. So this is the cost per property type. So we'd see most of the cost is coming out here in the residential area, about seven hundred thousand. And then this Quabin, commercial, industrial, Eagle Hill School, municipal, and the churches, and coming out to about eight hundred and fifty thousand. And that is the estimated, anticipated, um, sewer enterprise fund would be eight hundred and fifty thousand based on, um, the calculations in the new system, the new wastewater treatment plants. In the middle column is a three-bedroom maximum, so you'll see what goes down is the residential numbers. Quabin stays the same, all the other numbers stay the same. Cost per bedroom slightly increased. One bedroom is five sixty-eight, two-bedroom is one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven, three-bedroom, one thousand seven hundred, you know, approximately. And, and this, again, this sums up to what our goal is, about eight hundred and fifty thousand. Anyone, any questions on that so far? Okay. The other option is to using the equivalent dwelling units, so that would be your unit is per equivalent dwelling units. The residential units is only four hundred and eighty-two, because we're not counting per bedroom. And we're saying each unit is the same. Now, if you have a duplex, that would be counted as two different units. A residential would be forty-nine, commercial, industrial is seventy-three, based on the units that are there. Um, Eagle Hill School is eighty-three, municipal is thirteen, and churches are four. One dwelling would be one thousand two hundred, a duplex, two thousand four hundred, triplex, three thousand six hundred, and again, this sums up to the eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Does, um...
Go ahead.
Do- do- we wanna take some questions on this while you're, since you got the rates?
Yeah.
Did you wanna add more?
No, I just, I just was gonna open it up to any questions or comments or how these were derived or I'm, I'd be happy to answer what I can.
Kelly, you got anything?
Well, no. I think I'm good at this point.
How about you, Eric?
Well, the, I, I don't know what the rates mean, I guess. I'm feeling stupid. Is this, um, we wanna get to eight hundred and fifty thousand? That's, uh, annual cost of the enterprise fund?
That is what the, um, estimated cost for running the sewer system when the two treatment plants are up and running.
Okay, so these rates would be essentially annual numbers?
Correct. So right now, I think your, um, uh, your enterprise fund, the, the budget is a little bit less than this. I'm not sure what is running this, this time. Uh, but we were told from the engineering firm that with the two treatment plants and the new pump station, time, labor, expenses, chemicals, so that would be about eight hundred and fifty thousand. So that's the number that I'm trying to build to. So all your rate numbers and rate development has to come up to eight hundred and fifty thousand.
And I, and I assume, I'll just speak out, that if down the road we discover that the budget is gonna be nine fifty, all these methods would work, the math would just have, have to be revised.
Correct. I would, I would be leaving Nicole with the spreadsheets.
Right.
So she could, uh, punch in the new numbers. And eight fifty is, um, you know, if your insurance rates go down, your rates go down. If gas prices go down, it's gonna go down. You know, and that's, um, included in this. Now, what is also included is to pay off the three existing loans that you have. But it doesn't include any payoff for the new loan, because that's part of the betterment.
Right.
Okay, I was gonna ask about the existing debt. Uh, so this is, this is projected what it's gonna cost to run the operation once, once this job is done?
Correct. And again, I mean, if you wanted to make an assumption that, um, next year, year after, year after that, you want to, instead of eight fifty, you want it to be eight twenty, you can do that. But the point of this exercise is coming up with a method that you can divvy up whatever that final cost is that you want it to be. So I was told to go with the eight hundred and fifty thousand based on consulting the, um, engineers, talking to Scott, talking to Nicole about the indirect costs between departments and all of that.
Okay, and it really is not, it's not tied to whatever betterment scheme we come up with. And it's not really tied to the taxes. This is really just the fee for being on the system.
That's a very, that's a very good point. Um, it is not tied to either. Although sometimes I find communities, if they go with a per-dwelling unit, they might do their betterments per-dwelling. If they go with, um, their linear foot, road, frontage for their betterment, then you don't do your sewer rate by that. So, you know, you could, your uniform rate method can be, um, with the betterments also if you wanna do it per bedroom or per dwelling. But you don't have to. So they are not tied together.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, this is, this is more to figure out if we want to change our current system of charging rates, of how we charge the rates. Um, at this point, more so than dealing with the betterments, which is a completely different kinda animal at this.
Right.
Well, that would, um, I would like to tell you about one of the advantages of doing the per-bedroom method is you might have a, um, someone in a small house, maybe a senior couple in the small house, they're paying per-bedroom, and they only have a two-bedroom house. So it's not, well, paying the same as someone with a four-bedroom or three-bedroom. And you can see that in the rates paid by Quabin, that residential unit down here, it's about thirty-five thousand, here about forty thousand. On the per-dwelling unit, it's about sixty thousand.
Right. Okay, for me. You, you comfortable, Eric?
Yep.
I mean, I, I personally, uh, I like to change at least between the four and the three. It seems to brought some numbers a little closer, that we didn't have such a, a wide range here of, um, from five hundred dollars, basically two thousand dollars for a yearly cost. Um, I, I'm still a little concerned with seventeen hundred dollars on a three-bedroom house, um, knowing that quite a few of the houses probably have two people in them, they're three-bedroom, and they could be elderly also. But like I said, it's just, I guess I haven't really made a decision yet. I don't know about the rest of this. Eric or Kelly, have you guys made a decision on what you feel is the best route?
Um, I guess, uh, I kind of agree with you, Rob, that the, looking at the three-bedroom max does bring it, uh, you know, a little bit like a happy medium almost. Um, you, you're, we're still addressing it as, you know, per bedroom. But it's, um, you know, that, that gap from, you know, one unit where we're paying, you know, a little over a thousand dollars now, and that, that jumps, it's like, it puts it in half. I kinda, I have a hard time swallowing that, I guess, um, that we're actually going backwards, so I, I don't know. I, I, I do like the option of the, the three-bedroom max. But I'm, I'm kinda torn with if what we're doing now works. Um, especially if...
Well, I changed it.
Well, right, like, and, and if then recalculated where, you know, based on site visits. My, my question last week was, you know, are we accounting for some of those, you know, commercial units that were maybe being overcharged or undercharged? And it sounds like by site visits that, that, that was the case, like, it, those, that was all looked at when, when Lori and, um, Nicole visited places to maybe address those, um, discrepancies. So I, I guess I'm kinda, I'm kinda torn between the three-bedroom max and, you know, the way we currently do it.
Yeah, I guess one of my issues with doing it a bedroom, um, how some people define a bedroom. Uh, I know the Title V has a definition for how they...
Right.
Qualify homes and rooms. Yeah.
Means of a grass and a closet, right?
Yes. In Massachusetts, sometimes you have a, um, ceiling height, it has to have at least seven feet in one direction, you know, minimum. So you can't count a hallway.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, true.
Right, 'cause a hallway could have a closet and a, yeah, okay.
But I'm not so worried about, I'm more worried about people coming in and saying, "Well, that's a den, that's an office." You know, and, and we'll be getting into those discussions.
Right.
Just as, I mean, honestly, it's a matter of time to just get through them, but it could tie it up for years of people asking for abatements.
Um, I worked with one community in, in this method where they, before they sent out, um, their bedroom counts, they sent a letter to each person. We're redoing our, uh, this was for the betterments. We're redoing this based on the number of bedrooms. Our assessor's records say you have X number of bedrooms. If you do not agree with that, please give us a call and we'll set up a site visit. And couple of things, one person took out a wall, 'cause they wanted a big bedroom, and obviously it went down. It wasn't four bedrooms anymore, it was now three, and that was obvious. And, you know, and some other people wanted to it not to be a bedroom, so they didn't have to pay as much, and it, it hurts, but it, you know, that's kinda, you either, that's how you have to develop it.
Right. We just recently had a duplex take a wall down to make a single-family home.
Well, we don't, we don't have any way to meter this, that's obviously our problem.
Right.
Um, we go through this with abatements, or I've gone through this with abatements because people say they haven't been using it, uh, you know, an apartment that is not rented, you gotta also figure that it's possible to rent it, so it has value. It gets tricky, and then, and then going around to see, I don't know if we have that kind of, uh, manpower.
I, I guess to the, the point of, I, I understand we're trying to save, for the most part, elderly, 'cause I, I hear Quabin Estates basically being singled out here, or see, it being singled out here. And we've mentioned elderly, um, if, if we stayed the same and created a, a senior discount, is, that may be a better option? And, and we may have to adjust the, the EDU rate and, and create a, some kind of a senior discount, which we'd have to create, obviously, a bylaw around to, you know, give some parameters of what would qualify somebody.
I wonder if you're opening a, a, you know, a can of worms there, if you're gonna allow a senior discount, what's to say that someone who doesn't have the means is, you know, where do you stop those discounts at?
Well, I know the state has like, when they reimburse people for fees and stuff, they have, uh, income qualifications as well as age qualifications on a lot of the stuff. Um, people that obviously have to, if they wanted it, they would have to ask for it. It wouldn't just be an automatic. In, in a sense, it would be some kind of an abatement, in, in a way.
Right. I don't know if that would get a little convoluted with the rate, with the actual rate.
And, 'cause we, we go back to, when we get to the abatements, if we change the rate schedule with the EDUs now, I think it's gonna, we're gonna have to follow suit with whatever we do with abatements. That's the only reason I kinda bring it up right now.
And that shifts the cost onto those without abatements.
Everybody else, right?
Right. Which is always what happens, I think.
Yeah. Do we know how much, how many people are not paying sewer rates now? Do we have a figure for, uh, non-payment?
I don't have a figure for non-payment, but we are a little over half-collected, but, um, we are, we're just sending out a bill, you know, the bills are just going just now, so.
They're not due until the end of, the end of, the second bill isn't due until the end of May.
Yeah, and we've collected about, I think, I looked today, it was about four forty that we've collected so far, four fifty.
So, I mean, over the last couple of years, we, we've been getting a hundred percent of our bills paid?
No, we have paid, we probably have paid twenty-ish properties a year, and then I bet you there's probably twenty or so that don't pay, some that are so far in the rears that a few of these buildings have been kind of abandoned, that I think we're just keep tallying up on a few of them.
Yeah.
It becomes a lien on their taxes, like on their taxes.
Yeah.
Right, they get paid eventually, because even if we sell the lien, if we have lien auctions, then the next, you know, they do get paid. Um, and we do have, we have had sewer retained earnings every year that I've been there, so there's been money, you know, back. Um, so I don't know what the collection is, but I know that what we've collected and budgeted has been enough. Just because, you know, we get retained earnings back.
Uh-huh, thank you.
I mean, some people are slow, just slow on paying too. I mean, we, we may not get paid within the timeframe, but they'll pay the following year at some point.
Yeah.
It's a good, good question for, uh, the collector, you can
Um, just to let you know. Lori here. Some communities set up, um, you know, a, a payment plan. So if you have people who are having trouble paying, um, you wanna include what's coming up too, so they have a monthly payment plan instead of every six months paying.
We've got that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we offer that when it, when it needs to be, you know.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I can get the previous year collection rate though, for the, you know, for the past few years, I can get that from tomorrow from accounting.
I mean, you guys wanna discuss this anymore, or do you wanna move on to, uh, the abatements and then maybe discuss them both together, so people can see the information?
I'm good with that, Rob.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. If you don't mind, Lori, you wanna go over your abatement numbers?
Um, the betterments.
Sorry, betterments.
This is, um...
Big difference.
Yeah. Okay, so these, I, I just put blue, so it's different color than the green we had, so we can tell them apart. So these are betterments, and you wanted them, um, on the similar scenarios as before. Betterments are based on a uniform rate method. The rate, the uniform rate is per bedroom with the four-bedroom maximum. In the middle column is a three-bedroom maximum. And these are betterments based on EDUs, based on a uniform rate method. Existing residential EDUs were used, commercial and industrial EDUs were recalculated based on site visits and Title V calculations, which we went over before. The metered flow was converted based on the allocation of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twelve gallons per year. And that's similar to the system you're using now. So residential units on the four-bedroom max, there's one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven. Quabin is forty-nine, commercial, industrial is seventy-four, Eagle Hill School is ninety-seven, municipal is twenty-five, and churches are nine. This is the total number of units. The USDA loan is five million six hundred and eighty-one thousand. Half of the USDA loan is, would be bettered, the other half is gonna go on the tax base. So that's two million eight hundred and forty thousand five hundred. So this amount, if you divide this into that, it comes up with one thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. About. So let's see how they add up. The re- residential betterments are about two-point-three million. The Quabin is ninety-three thousand, almost ninety-four thousand. Commercial, industrial is a hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine. Eagle Hill School is a hundred and eighty-six thousand. Municipal is forty-eight, almost forty-nine thousand, and churches are seventeen thousand. And we talked at the last meeting that you wanted to, um, include the municipal buildings in the betterments, even though half of the money is going on the tax base. So one bedroom is, um, one thousand nine hundred and seventeen, two bedrooms, three hundred, three thousand eight hundred and thirty-five, and so on. Any questions about that before we move on? Okay. This is the three-bedroom, so your residential units go down. Everything else stays pretty, pretty much the same. This is gonna be slightly higher, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six. And this is your cost for residential, commercial, Quabin, Eagle Hill School, municipal, and churches. And again, both of these, this one and this one here, add up to our target number, which is half the alone amount. And this is a betterment cost per house. You know, it's, it's, um, slightly more than the other one, but you don't have the four-bedroom in there. And this column is based on the current EDUs. Betterments are based on the uniform rate method. Existing EDUs were used, commercial and industrial EDUs were recalculated based on site visits, and Title V calculations. The metered flow was converted based on The metered flow was converted based on the allocation of 32,912 gallons per year. So this is the number of residential units. A duplex would be two units, triplex would be three. Commercial industrial is 73, Eagle Hill School is 83, municipal is 13, churches are four. That adds up to 407 and the betterment per unit here is $4,000. And again, per unit times the betterment, this is the cost per property type. And again, this adds up to our target number of approximately 2.8 million.
Yikes.
Now, betterments can be financed over a period that you folks decide upon. Is it 10 years? Is it 20 years? 30 years? And charged at the interest rate that you're paying up to 2% more of interest that you're paying, which is 1.375%.
And that figure stays solid throughout the life of this loan?
The interest rate stays solid throughout the life of the loan.
I'm coming late to this, but have you guys talked about putting this more on the tax base, the whole thing, instead of just 50% of it?
That would be a decision in your letter of conditions from the USDA. It's noted that half will go on the tax base and the other half will go on the sewer users. Being an enterprise fund, it is separate, so it's supposed to pay its own bills, but you can say the general public does benefit from clean water coming out of the treatment plants going into the river. So I don't know if you could justify all of the expense going on non-s sewer users.
I hope I don't get shot for what I just said.
No, I think Eric, I, so I'll, I mean, I'll back you up there because I think we've all thought back to see, you know, what, what would the lesser of the evil look like, right?
Right.
Um, this is a lot, this is a big burden on a small amount of people. And so if we split it over a larger amount of people, that burden may not be so much. So you, you just said, I think, out loud what we're all thinking and have thought or have at least pondered, but I think that would be a conversation, first of all, with USDA to see if they would be willing to even, you know, allow us to entertain that and then, you know, possibly another vote.
Another thing is now we're dividing it among the sewer users, those who are connected. Sewer users who are not connected, I mean, they're not sewer users, but if they're along the line, when you put the lines and did you require everybody to connect? And if you did not, you might have people along the line who could connect but have chosen not to, and I've seen sometimes those people are bettered. But some communities have, if the sewer line goes in front of your house, you have to connect no matter what. Then other people say, well, you want me to connect, but I can't just connect because I'd need a grinder pump, this, that and the other thing. So if you pay for that, then I will connect. So then they'd have to pay a betterment and for construction of their line, which is, you know, a few grand at least.
In the way I've always understood it, the betterment is the potential for a piece of land. It betters the, you know, a future house lot. So that, that would be a way to figure for, for frontage. I've seen that mentioned, but that's not here. We're not looking at that.
Well, you bring up a good point. If there's sewer in front of your house and you can connect, your sewer is, your property is worth more. That's why your property is bettered. That's why they call it a betterment.
Right.
And I don't know if your regulations say, and I think I suggested that you visit this, say that anyone changing house, you have to automatically connect to the sewer. Or if your septic system fails, you can't replace your septic system, you have to automatically connect to the sewer.
I thought that's the way we, again, I missed 10 years of this, but I think we were talking about that at the beginning.
Yeah.
Not forcing people to hook up unless they were in failure.
Correct.
I think you have to create a district also to do stuff like that. If you're going to enforce that everybody ties into it, I think you have to like create a district zone and outline the area that people are going to be required to tie in. I could be wrong, but I was told a while back that that was the case.
That sounds pretty accurate.
So Lori, just to clarify, if we chose to stay for our rates with our EDUs, we don't have to choose EDUs for betterments? And I'm just using that as an example.
I'm sorry, I just, I just called up on the screen, the chat, because I originally had this, so can you read this Nicole? Because they're not asking, I think, you're the board, they're asking the question. I'd be happy to answer if you want me to. Can you read that, guys?
Um, well, I mean, we'll, we'll take questions from people in a minute.
Okay, sure, sure.
If you respond to Kelly first, please.
Okay, I'm sorry, Kelly, I was, I saw that text. What was your question again? I'm sorry.
Um, if we choose one method of charging our rates, we don't necessarily have to pick the same method for implementing betterments, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that, just so that I understood that correctly and anyone else that, you know, questioned it. Thank you.
As long as it's a uniform rate method, you know, it's, is it the house? Is it the bedroom? A uniform could be linear foot of road frontage. You can't say, if it's not logical, you can't adopt it.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at these three options, thinking that, you know, I think these are three, you know, reasonable options in front of us. And so say we stayed with EDUs for our rates, but decided that we wanted to go with the three-bedroom max for our betterments, we can do that.
Yes, but that would be a question I would suggest that you talk to your attorney before you put all the wheels in motion.
Oh.
But I've seen that done before, you know?
Okay, okay, fair enough.
Quite often people are doing the betterments and the rates don't enter into it because that was decided upon long ago.
Okay.
Um, did you, Lori, did you want to answer this question here? Is Quavon Estates metered?
Is, I'm not sure if Quavon Estates is metered. Are they on the water system?
They're on Wheelwright Water District.
They're on Wheelwright Water, yeah.
Okay, so they are metered, but the question is, if it was, can they actually used to be divided between the number of bedrooms? And I think this question is related to the betterment or the rates. Uh, because if it's related to the betterment, you could only better the property owners. So I don't know if the people are renters or owners. Because your betterment is tied to a deed.
Right, yeah, it's...
So I don't know if they actually own, or I believe that they do not own, because it's one bill that goes to that whole property.
Correct, I think they rent, I'm sure, I'm sure it's passed on.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I agree, Kelly. You cannot levy a betterment on someone who doesn't own property. All the betterments are going to be registered as deeds.
To the owner, yeah.
To the property.
Yeah, this question was relative to the rates though, they just, he just said it was a, yeah, he's questioning the rates.
Right, oh, okay. Second one, the 3A line, stubs at every house along the line. So they put in stubs.
Yeah.
That, well, for stubs, it wouldn't be relevant to the rates because you don't rate, charge a rate unless they're connected.
Yeah, I think he may have just been stating that anyone along the line has the capability to hook up when we were talking about, yeah.
And we'd have to see, I only included those along the line who are connected hooked up. The other ones who are not connected, you have to decide if they're not connected and if they can connect by a grinder pump or is it a gravity connection?
All the ones in Hardwick Center are grinder pumps along to that line. It's a force main up there.
Right. So do you give them a betterment even though, like, someone who could flow by gravity, they'll have like say a $4,000 betterment. This other person is a $4,000 betterment, but it's going to be a couple of grands to get a grinder pump in there. So do you charge them the same amount of betterment or do you reduce it by the cost of the grinder pump? Your decision. And that would bring on a few more parcels to bring the rates down. And I don't know how many parcels along the route that aren't connected on some of the older streets.
And if we did look at frontage, then there are another 10 parcels.
Oh, at least.
And in that case, you can better people that are, that don't have a, they don't have a structure there.
Correct.
I think more and more I'm liking the whole, can we see what it does to the taxes before we go and do betterments on people that aren't even hooked up and, I don't know.
Well, I would be happy, if you get me the numbers of the people who have access to the sewer line through their property, not through another person's property, I could include those numbers in there.
It's probably, from what I've hooked up since they built the line, I don't know, you're probably looking at like another 30, 35.
Okay.
Have access. It's, it's a, it's an estimate, but.
Okay, so let's say that, is that Wheelwright too, Rob?
Well, I don't think that this, the stubs are only put in when they put the pressure main, the, yeah, pressure line going up to Hardwick Center.
Yeah.
Wheelwright, I believe, is an actual district. And I believe Gilville has an actual district layout where, where you've had hookups and anybody in the area has to hook up, basically.
Traditionally, when they run a sewer line, they put a stub to the property line. If they haven't put a stub to the property line, it's kind of hard to charge them a betterment, because then they have to dig up in the public street to connect to the sewer line. So I don't know the number of people, if you say they're 30, so if just... So it would go from, go down to 3,000, about 900, if you had 30 more connections.
But there we're talking about open land with no stubs. And as you say, it would be more of a, a lot more of a task to hook up. We'd have to break the line.
Yeah.
I think you can only...
Charging someone a betterment and they want to hook up and then they have to get a street opening permit and pay for the contractor to, you know, then it's going to cost them more than the cost of the betterment.
If we go with the per-bedroom basis, how would we handle the betterment to, like a stub?
Okay, so if you're talking about the per-bedroom and someone is not connected, when they do connect, you charge a connection fee that is similar to the betterment amount?
So if they have a three-bedroom house and they want to connect, they would be looking at paying about $6,000.
To connect, correct, yeah.
Like I said, it's, it's very limited to that one area.
Right.
But there are stubs there, so I don't know. But are you saying that some areas would actually, even if they're not hooked up, if they have that option to have that stub, that you would charge that betterment regardless at this point?
I find, I have found communities who say, the sewer line's going in, you're getting a stub, you get a betterment. I have communities said, we'll do that if there's a structure there. If there's no structure there, they choose not to levy the betterment and divide it up among everybody else. Most of the times I'm doing the betterment analysis is sewer lines are going in the ground at the time. So it's pretty clear that I have the plans of the sewer and I know where it is and I know which houses are getting stubs. So this is a little bit different that we have to go back in time to see what sewer lines went, were laid out and where did the property actually got stubs.
Yeah, and it's been there for seven years or so, so now you're charging betterments for something that's been there for a while.
Yeah, so Wheelwright in Gilbertville, I don't know how old the treatment plants are, so the sewer line's got to be as low, as low as the three treatment plants.
The Gilbertville plant is built in 1972 with a life expectancy of 20 years. The Wheelwright plant was rebuilt, but turned out kind of experimentally. I don't know what, what its lifespan is.
Already exceeded.
Uh, you guys got anything that you want to add? Any more questions for Lori?
I don't know if it's in Lori's basket, but I, I would like to look at what the cost would be to spread this out across the tax base. I know I'm committing suicide here, but I'd like to see those numbers. Maybe I can get together with Jen. see those numbers, maybe I can get together with Jen and ask her.
We've, we are.
I actually, I actually have them. It's fifty, fifty-four cents a thousand.
Is that for the full cost of this, um, loan, or half the cost?
That'd be for the full cost.
Okay, so it's fifty-four cents per thousand.
I believe the average family home was something like three fifty, Rob, do you have that DLS sheet in front of you?
Yeah, I'm trying to open, I just remember the per thousand rate.
I think it was like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For Department of Local Services, there's a way to calculate that. We did it because, you know, uh, the police station was gonna be about this much, and this is how much we thought, you know, we thought we would be able to borrow, you know, how much this was gonna be, um, so.
Yeah, three hundred, about three hundred and twenty-five thousand, hundred and seventy-five dollars per household.
Not, just three hundred and twenty-five, right?
Yeah.
Hundred and seventy-five dollars per household?
Uh, uh, well, you're better off going with the fifty-four cents per thousand, so if you know what your tax bill is.
Got it, got it.
Because I don't wanna mislead people thinking that.
Yeah.
You know, they, they might have a eight hundred thousand dollar house, which is tall, it's a hundred and seventy-five.
Based on your valuation of your home, so you'd have to do the math of, of the fifty-four cents per thousand.
Right.
Now, is that, um, paying off the loan and the interest?
I am, uh, I'll have to confirm that's the correct information, but that's what I have here, so.
And, um, the USDA would have some say in the matter, and, um, 'cause it's already written in your letter of condition, so I don't, you know, you would have to talk to.
Yeah, we'd have to have a conversation with them, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we'd have to get it through town meeting, but we have to do that with the betterments anyway, right?
Correct. The betterments have to go to, go vote.
Yes.
And the boost in taxes is fifty percent of that's gonna happen anyway.
Correct.
By any of our plans here.
Correct. Yep, so, um, yeah.
There's no free options.
No.
There's no good option.
But like I said, you know, what, what we're tasked to do is find the best option for, for anyone and everyone involved. You know, the town voted to do this project, the town voted to borrow this money.
Yeah, well, we could come up with a, a betterment solution on one end, and then also let people kinda choose, okay, we'll put it out there as a hundred percent taxation, if the USDA allows it, of course.
Right.
And, and then we could have a betterment solution that we would offer if the taxpayers didn't wanna do that.
Correct, yeah, and, and again, I, I want, um, I think, A, we need to get this moving, so we need to be having these meetings, these information, public meetings, whatever we need to have. But I want clarification from, um, legal on how we have to, to, you know, present this and do this, so that we're doing it the right way.
Well, we have numbers now, go ahead.
Nicole, if you can get me the number of, uh, potential people to hook up to the sewer who were given a t, sewer tie, but never hooked up and are not being billed.
I would imagine Scott has that.
Um, he, I'm sure he has that for, um, thirty-two A line, but the older lines, I don't know if that information is available.
Lori, it sounds like from what Rob was saying, they weren't given an option down in Gilbertville and Willwright. If it's a district, they had to hook up, am I, did I, did I understand that right, Rob?
Yeah, I, I believe that you got a hundred percent build out.
Right, because I think the size of the property's everywhere, they had to hook up.
Yeah.
Like the size of the parcels, you know, for septic's wouldn't be feasible, so I think they, they had to hook up.
Yeah, cuz I actually wanna say, I, I believe, uh, the offices down Barton. I believe they hooked in when they took over that building.
Mm-hmm.
Like, I could be wrong, but I seem to remember them digging down there, to make a connection.
Kinda makes sense, I'm sure, I'm sure things weren't working so hot there after it's been empty for a long time.
Yeah.
So now we do have a bunch of numbers, we can cut and paste and put together some sort of sane s, choices to present.
Right, well, so, the, the rates are on us, correct?
The rates are, are one of the things that you need to do.
We have to do, yeah.
Right, and I think they want you to do it quickly because, um, they wanna move forward with the loan grant amount. Let me go back to the rates.
Do, do we have the sewer budget yet, Nicole?
Um, most of it, yes, but like some of the debt we don't have yet from Unibank. I'm afraid the rates are gonna go a, through the roof, I'm not sure yet. We have, you know, Scott's projections.
I mean, I, I think the.
The older debt service, you should have that, but you mean the interim financing for this project?
I mean the one point eight million dollars that we just borrowed.
Yeah, I, I, I think it'd be a good idea if maybe we could tie these numbers to the actual budget that's coming up.
It's very close to.
It's, it's very close to eight fifty, but it's not over eight fifty, correct?
Not so far, I just, like I said, I, the, the interest, because of how the, you know, everything went up, um, and all the tech, the feds hiked everything, uh, I don't know what that interest is gonna be on that one point eight. It's a conversation I was gonna have with you probably tomorrow. So, I don't know exactly, but we may want, we may, we may wanna know that before, I mean, these, these, these numbers could get a little crazy.
Well, uh, I am going to set Nicole up, so whatever the rate is, we, you can, you have to decide on a format for a rate.
Right.
And whether it's eight fifty, eight sixty, eight seventy, eight eighty, you know?
All the formulas there, Lori, in these.
Yeah, I will, I will send you the whole thing. I know that Joe Delbo from USDA was really, um, wanted to know if the, a decision is made, cuz they wanna release this money, and they can't do it until you've made a decision.
Right, and I have, he just sent me an invite to have a meeting with him on Monday morning at ten AM.
Excellent, let me know if you need me to be there.
Well, in order to change the rates, we're probably gonna have to change, at least look at how, cuz currently, our whole regulation is written off the EDU's basis. The regulation pretty much revolves around that. So we actually would have to change our regulation to change the rates. We have to change the wording in some of those documents to change rates. We'd have to look at even our abatement process to change the, you know, in order to change the rates. So really, this isn't a, a really quick answer. I mean, if we're gonna change the way that we are currently charging, we just can't change the way we're, without changing how we are, kind of, regulations are written to the way we charge.
You, you, um, in the report I gave you, it's definitely imperative that you revi, revisit your regulations.
Right, I think that's, I think that's been known all along, we have to do that, right?
Yeah, at least for the past year I've been involved, that we've, we've known that's gonna have to be done.
Right.
You can't write the regulations around, um, a method you haven't chosen.
Correct.
Correct, so, we don't have time, timing is of the essence, so we don't really have time to rewrite our regulations right now and get the project moving.
Do we have to go to town meeting for that?
For what?
To change the regulations?
Well, I believe we can do it in-house, we'd, I'd ask legal, but.
Cuz you're an enterprise fund.
Right, and we're, we're acting as, we're acting as the sewer commission.
Right, okay, good, good.
Under the board now.
I mean, they were rewritten in twenty-ten, they're updated, I should say. I'm looking at them now. I don't, I don't remember if it went to town, I don't think it did go to town meeting.
I don't think so.
I think, but there's probably some.
I'm not trying to make trouble, I'm just looking for landmines.
Sure.
Well, but, a, as am I, I just, I don't want us to, to move forward on a new rate, and then, oh, we need to change the regulations to actually adopt the rate.
Right.
And, you know, cuz we got, that's also a step we, so, do each.
So I think we, yeah, right.
You could do your rates based on EDUs that is somewhat similar to your regulations. Adopt your, your new rates, rewrite your regulations, and then, if you want, based on a four-bedroom or three-bedroom per unit charge the following year. First of all, most people, I, I suggest that they visit their rates every year, whether it's a one percent increase, but the cost of doing business is not going down anywhere.
No.
Um, so, I, I think you want to, um, you'll have a method in a format that you can, if you adopt the E, continue to do the EDUs, you have a formula that you can revisit it every year. But you also wanna have in your regulations that you have the option of.
Other, these other rates.
Yeah, or adding and adjusting people's rates during the year in case, um, use change, laundromat becomes a restaurant or something.
Well, I kinda like that idea, I, I think, my thought is that I was hoping we would actually vote on the rates tonight, to be honest with you. We've, we've now had a few meetings about the rates. We've gotten more information every time, um, I, I do think that we have to act on it, and I don't think that we're being rushed into anything. Um, I like what Lori just said, you know, if we continue based on EDUs to rewrite our, our, um, let me, thank you, regulations, and then add these other structures in there, so that we have the option and, and reevaluate it next day. It, it should be revisited, you know, every May before town meeting.
I think if you were to decide and vote on, um, rates, we know that is one of the requirements for you to get this, these projects moving.
Mm-hmm.
And I just, um, I don't want you to lose out on that money.
Well, can I make a motion that we do that, that we vote to continue with this EDU-based rate?
Can I, can I add the other language in that, um, we will re, rewrite our regulations based on this and the additional two rate structures that were given to us, and reevaluate next, you know, every year annually prior to town, you know, prior to the town meeting, which is the budget for this enterprise fund, and I'll second that.
Can I, do you want me to put an option number on here, this is an option you're choosing? So when you go to USDA, you have an option in hand of what you voted on?
Yep, that's, that was in motion, that, that we should go with the EDU-based option.
Option three.
Alright, so we have, we have a motion and a second that we will stay with option three, which is the EDU-based rate. But we will add regulations, we'll add, alright, I, I, can we like rescind the motion, and then maybe Kelly, since you added so much, word it in, in the way, because I think you guys are on the same page, I just wanna make sure this is clear when we move it forward, does that make sense?
It does. Eric, do you wanna rescind your motion quickly?
Well, I moved it, I rescind my motion.
I'll make a motion that.
Can I, can I interrupt for a second, Kelly?
Go ahead, Lauren.
No, I, I don't want you making, have to rescind, okay, so, if you're voting on option three, it is different than, I'm going to continue with my EDU rate.
Correct.
Okay, I just, so if you voted on option three because a couple of things were recalculated based on site visits.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, go ahead.
No, thank you Lori, cuz that makes, that ma, that makes sense. Um, I would make a motion that we choose option three rates based on EDUs that were recalculated based on site visits and Title V calculations. With the understanding that we will rewrite our regulations with this option and the additional two options that were provided to us, um, based on per bedroom with a four-bedroom max, based on per bedroom with a three-bedroom max, and reevaluate our rates annually prior to town meeting.
A second. Okay, do we wanna discuss this any further? Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Uh, sorry, I gotta do a roll call, because we're on Zoom here.
Yep.
Uh, Kelly?
Uh, yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob, is he a s? Okay, so we have now passed a quasi-rate structure. We have one for this year, and we will reevaluate instead of new one for probably next year. Okay, that's good. Um, moving on, do we want, are we gonna try to put the betterments, I guess, when it comes to the betterments, are we gonna try putting them on the annual town meeting, or did we wanna have a separate meeting for these?
May I interject again, I'm not on the board, but, um.
Yes, you may speak freely.
You may want to consider if you're doing the betterments just with the sewer, it's a sewer decision. Right, or, or if you're putting it on the town meeting, that might be a different decision.
Right. Does, does it make sense to maybe have a, a public meeting to get a sense of, you know, to get some input, more so than, you know, just the few people that join us here? And in the meantime, you know, to, talk to USDA about, you know, what Eric had suggested, and, and like I said, we're all, we all have been thinking it about, you know, putting it on the tax rate as well.
Think we're gonna have to.
I mean, that's, absolutely, we need to have like a real public meeting about this, but, um, I, I guess we do need to get the answer first from USDA if, if they're gonna allow that. Even as an option, because if it's not even an option, we, narrows what we have to deal with. Even as an option, because if it's not even an option, we narrows what we have to deal with.
Right.
Uh, and we should get our legal opinion back about. Um, exactly. What we need to do to make sure whatever we vote on and what is done is done correctly.
Right.
Even whatever wording we may need to do either one of these options.
Presented, how it's, you know, you know, like I question, is it a yes or a no? Is it a, here's your option, you gotta pick one? Like, these are all the things that I've been questioning, um, you know, for a while now. And, and personally, I'm happy to reach out to Greg Corbo and. And just email him, you know, and find out.
Yeah, I mean, it, it probably would make the most sense cuz, I mean, we've been working on this for a while and. It might be easier with you and if you have follow-up questions to. I mean. You and I have been working on it for a while. I mean, we're bringing Eric up to speed as much as we can and. As fast as we can, so you, you understand what questions we have as far as legalities of it, so.
I just like, let's not do it the wrong way so that we have to redo the, you, you just like, you know, yeah.
Yeah, no, we don't have a lot of time.
No, I agree, you know, I, I do think that they're, you know, they're waiting for us to, to. You know, we, we voted tonight on this, which I think is great. It's forward motion, you know, it's for moving forward. But, um, we have, we have to keep going, for sure.
Do, do you have any objections, Eric, to Kelly contacting legal?
No, not at all. I'm, I'd like to get copied on it. Keep track of the conversation cuz this is stuff that is new to me, but.
Yeah.
No.
Absolutely.
Again, it, it makes most sense to keep going. But, let's do what we're good at. And I think betterments have to be voted at town meeting anyway.
Right, but is it, you know, do we? Is it something that we try to get on the warrant for the annual town meeting? Or, you know, like Lori said, if it's only gonna affect sewer users, then is it, you know, a special meeting? Or, or does it need to be like a ballot? I don't know. These are the questions that I keep asking, but I don't, you know, I just want some clarification.
I think we're pretty, we're a lot closer to having a, some items to present in terms of a choice.
Correct.
Just even after tonight, so.
Yeah.
Should, should we schedule a, a public meeting about this, or do you wanna wait? Cuz that may take time and we're already. May third here today, so.
Do we, do we know?
Well, we meet, we meet Monday, right? So maybe by Monday. We'll just put something in to discuss sewer and our agenda for Monday. And if, maybe we should discuss it then, see if we get some legal answers.
Yeah.
By then, which it may or may not happen, I don't know. They, sometimes they're quick, sometimes they're not.
Yeah, he's pretty good. Been a while since I, I talked to him.
Yeah. I, I mean, really, the next step it would be to have a, like, more of a public hearing.
Right. Just to feel like it's informational.
Yeah.
Lori, are you willing to come out, um, for that? If, you know, if we do a public informational thing on the betterments?
When are you thinking?
Well, that's, that's, that's our next thought.
I'm, I will try to make myself available, you know, pending on my schedule.
Yeah, I would say we're talking probably two, at least two weeks out.
Yeah, I have a very busy week next. I have something every block doc. Um, the week after, I am wide open.
Um, I'll trust that Nicole, you will keep me in the loop and let me know when you're going to schedule that?
Yeah, of course, if they're not scheduling it now.
Okay. Oh. Do we want this due for the weekend the fifteenth?
Yeah, well, we're probably gonna need the school, or we're gonna just try to do a. A Zoom thing? I mean, I think we'll have enough room in the municipal building. That's gonna be kinda the tricky part.
I know. I mean, we can certainly try Zoom and getting the word out there and, um. You know, in person. I think if we did it in person, I think I would be, I would think we need the school. Just in case.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, we have more than thirty people in our space. It's, it's a full capacity.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's up to you. Do you, I mean, do you think we wanna try to just do it over Zoom?
We could try and see what the participation is. I don't know. How many people are really worried about it? Or they've just accepted it, so.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, why don't we shoot, what do you wanna shoot for the sixteenth, you said?
I'm, I can do the sixteenth.
So can I.
Someone did bring up Zoom is not good for elderly.
They make a point.
Or do we, do we Zoom it from, can we Zoom it from the municipal building? I mean, we normally have coverage there. Is there a way for people to ask questions if we're at the municipal building, if they wanna stay online? Not really.
That would alleviate a bigger crowd.
Do we know why Zoom is bad for elderly?
Maybe just accessibility.
Well, it's true. I almost didn't have a working computer tonight.
You know, just access and, and the, you know, capability to do it.
I mean, I can be at town hall and I can hook my computer up so it comes over the screen for Zoom.
And do, and do Zoom?
Do, oh, like, I can be in town hall and then, like, if you guys weren't there. Or if, you know, just save room for maybe if there's thirty elderly people that wanna come. I don't know.
You do it at the townhouse.
I have no service.
Yeah.
We don't, we can't do hardware TV, like, none of that can happen up there.
I'd go into the municipal office building too with, with the elderly. I'm elderly.
So do you wanna meet, do you wanna meet at the, at the municipal building and Zoom it? And then there's both options and hopefully we don't get more than thirty-four people?
Yeah, I mean, let's try. If we have to cancel, I'd. And Lori, that way Lori doesn't have to drive out either.
Right.
Which, kinda helpful.
Yeah, for sure.
I don't mind whichever, whichever is more convenient, I can, I can do that, but thank you.
I, I mean. I mean, it probably is a, a little better when we can put the stuff on the screen for a lot of people. They can. Especially now we have the screens, they can see stuff.
Right.
This is gonna be informational. We're not gonna be looking for a vote.
No, correct.
Present, okay.
Just getting the, getting the, the numbers out there to people.
That's some of the options, and maybe we can, maybe it'll allow us to test the wires a little bit to see what.
That was kind of my thought on, yeah, getting the, getting the public involved more, just to see, you know. That feedback. For sure.
So what time we wanna do? Six?
Six or six thirty, I'm good either.
Six PM.
You wanna do six, Rob? Is that good for you?
Yeah, let's try to bump it up a little earlier just to.
Give some time.
You're going to be voting, uh, you're going to be discussing the betterments?
Right.
Correct, okay. Will you be inviting anyone from USDA?
I don't think we need them, do we?
I can tell Joe about it when we meet.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it's our debt. We're just discussing how to pay the debt. Off. I mean, if Joe wants to come, he's, you guys are always welcome, more than ever.
Yeah.
So six PM it is.
Okay. And we'll do Zoom and, and in person?
In person.
Okay.
I, I mean, the problem even with the school is we don't have the hookup for the TV system at the school, so.
Correct.
It's always hard for people to hear.
Well, and it would be good if, you know, to have it, the YouTube and Zoom, and or Zoom, just for people to be able to refer back to it. If they can't make it. And we may need to have another one, an, an additional one.
Yes. Yeah, well, we, hopefully we got time. That's.
Six o'clock on the sixteenth.
Six o'clock, yep.
Hey, sixteenth, six. Um, okay. Before we move on, do we have any questions for Lori? Before we move on from the peanut gallery or anywhere?
I can take, uh, I'll take it back, Lori.
Okay, what do I have to do here?
I think I can just take it.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lori. Sixteen.
All right, bye.
Bye, thank you, Lori.
Okay, um. The next item on the agenda would be just the sewer, discussing the sewer. Which I've been talking about all night, but, um. We had talked about. Uh, getting RFP out there for oversight management of the plants and operations and stuff. And also, as we build out. And, um, I, I kinda feel that whoever. Is gonna oversee the operation and management of the plants to help with, actually more or less help. Not as a full-time thing. Is gonna have to work with the building and development of the plants to kinda work with the construction. Um, and, and I know Nicole had kinda sent us some RFP stuff and. Um. Did you guys look over, well, Kelly, I don't know if Eric was copied on that yet. Eric, were you copied on any of the RFP proposals?
No, were you talking about a clerk of the works?
It, it'd be a clerk of, in, in a sense, while the building's going on, they would act somewhat as a clerk of the works, but. Usually whoever, you kinda wanna bring that group of people as the thing goes online. So they would stay afterwards. After it's running and help oversee the operation of a new plant. Cuz there's, there's always stuff with a new. Nothing ever is gonna turn on and run perfect, so, so it's always good to have. Help when the management, when the, the new plant starts up.
Well, and we have to. Part of the ladder of conditions to have is to have an oversight, um, of that in place.
We're, we're gonna create a position, pretty much.
Well. I wouldn't create a position. There's companies out there that have people that do this. Management companies and they. There's some really large ones, there's some local ones, but. They basically can help us work through this situation. I, I really don't want us to get into a situation like we were with Wheelwright. Where we get down to the end and. You know, everybody's pointing fingers at everybody else. It was this person's fault, that person's fault, so. We spent six million dollars, now we're spending another seven million dollars again, so.
Absolutely. No, we need somebody that works for us. A consultant that knows what they're looking at and is not. The same person as did all the design work, or, I mean, we need to have somebody neutral essentially, working for us.
Correct. And al- also, they, I don't wanna put it on our superintendent either to try to. Over, there's a lot of stuff that's gonna be going on in the next year and I, it's, it's beyond. What they're paid to do and a lot of it's gonna be beyond their real knowledge of how things are done.
I agree completely.
Gosh, trying to look at my old emails and find the one that.
I just tried to look quickly and, um, I will be honest that it's definitely buried.
I can rescind the all to.
And, and maybe we.
So I think there's a few different ones. There's one from DPC because they do it right now in orange, so, um. I have a few different ones that is on my computer at work in, in the, in the USDA folder.
So maybe we can get that and we can discuss this also on Monday, um. Cuz we're, we're running late already tonight and. Um, if that's okay with you guys, if we make a point to really look at, try to make a decision.
Yeah, I would like to kinda just take a look. I remember reading them, but to be honest. I would definitely wanna reread them again and, and, um. See if something fits or add, you know, I, I do agree that maybe. We put it out there now for, for the length of the project and then it would be that, you know. That to oversee once it's up and running.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, I really feel like it's, it's kind of an important thing and it hopefully will help for. A smooth transition cuz. There, there's always stuff, always. Nothing's perfect.
No, there, I mean, and I think with, you know, Wheelwright being a prime example, I think there were change orders in the field that. People did themselves, not having the knowledge to do that, and that's why it wasn't in compliance from day one.
True.
Let's not rat a hole again.
Yeah, um. Do we have anything else we wanna discuss or? Or pretty much?
I'd, I'd move me adjourned.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor? Kelly?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
Rob, yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.